You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Make the motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes in November 8.
Second. Anything further on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes 1, 2, and 3 for November 8.
Second. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the special meeting minutes of November 17.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes of November 17.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have you anything to add to that?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the minutes before we get into public input, I recommend we unseal the 1117 minutes and the minutes number 1 and 3 from 118. The circumstances for which we sealed them are no longer... The information is public, so I recommend we unseal those minutes.
So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Mike, do you have anything before we go into public input?
Yeah.
Ken's status?
Just wanted to mention, folks will notice, that Chairman Colby is not here, so he had a pretty significant fall before Thanksgiving, so he has been in the hospital, but I'll wish him well and understand he's on the road to recovery, but I just wanted to mention that that is why he's not here.
Thank you. Public input.
Hi.
I'm Marcy Jarzadak from Seventeen Waters End Road in North Swansea.
I don't know if you want to come up and join us, I don't know if they're going to be able to hear you from there, Marcy. Since you've got elected spokesperson, you get to join us up here.
Can my posse come with me?
They can sit in the front row.
Well, again, I'm Marcy Jarzadak from Seventeen Waters End Road in North Swansea. I'm here to ask a few questions regarding the water level with Wilson Pond and to see if there's any updates as to when it will be drawn down.
I was wondering that myself when I drove by this morning, so interesting that you should bring that in.
And I just... We're all concerned as an ongoing notation that we... There's docks that are in the water that normally are not in the water at this time, and if anybody has any insight as to what the problem is.
I understand from the DPW directory that we're at the normal winter drawdown level in terms of boards, so the only answer I can speculate is that it's water coming in from Wilson that's keeping it from going below.
And why is the diversion dam not working? The diversion dam is in place to help when a situation such as this arises to stop the water from coming out of that river down to our pond and making the boards that are taken out do their job. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and somebody down here might be able to concur, I believe there's still one more board that could come out.
Yeah, so, Mark Sclaire, so we were running five and a half boards this year, down to half the boards from previous levels, and now they determine to be a better level. Usually when we draw down for winter, we take all but one board in. And that's what we're told is the case. It doesn't seem like it, right? You know, if we're doing the same thing, why are we not seeing the same results? You have not had a lot of money to, you know, make up this thing being out there. I was wearing four days, but I came back in the winter. And as Marcy said, there's a lot of docks, people, you know, built their docks, designed the docks based on the accepted water level, and the water level is dug up by probably 16, 18 inches. It's excessive. So in all cases, we're thinking out best board out, but Joseph would like to do it because it's good chance of the rack collapsing. But we're really at a pretty extreme level here at this point, and we'd see if it's on the pond or even... So, you know, I don't know what the solution is. Personally, verified that all but one board is in, because maybe it's a mistake, I don't know. And if not, you have to consider taking out last board out.
Discuss it, I guess, with Joe Russo and find out something the next meeting.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mark, you're saying that normally it would be down to one board, so your expectation is it's down to one board now?
Yeah, that's what we're told, that there's only one board in, right? But the water level is still probably about 16 inches above, you know, with the normal water level. You know, I live on Lane Street, I have an island there, I think at this point I should be able to walk over to that island. I can't even come close to doing that.
And, you know, we take somewhere dock out in the winter, but it leaves the section we've been in. Took it out because previous years it's dead, relates the dock. So when the ice forms and melts, forms again, the water goes in and out of the shore and pulls the dock with it. So a lot of us has had damage to our docks on the pond, so some of us take the dock out, but it's not going to be as good if, well, we've got, I've got one section left, if that's in the water too, that's going to get affected this way. Normally it's dry. And it's not, it's, there's about this much more water on the shore than there is.
It probably overdoes the dock. Normally it's safe that the water level stays where it is within six inches down from it will begin to shield undoubtedly. Once that ice freezes and starts getting that shield, yes, nothing's stopping. And it's something that we can, you know, directly, quite sometimes, like, I can, you know, I've spoken with Mike, I don't know, you know, what to put the solution there, but it's definitely higher than that.
So if there's normally one board and there is one board, let's say there is, what would cause the, what would prevent the water level from going down to where it normally would be with one board?
Yeah, it's got to be a flow coming in. You know, a couple of years ago, there was, I guess, when I was moving to the area, I know they literally got by a diversion dam, so it's pretty much free flowing, you know, it blocks it, it's debris. You know, it's something we want with flow, but when we draw the water down, we should flow, we have no controls over that, so.
Bill, I'm not sure that's what's wrong. You look at the water going in the culvert, coming over 12 there, and it doesn't look like it's excessive. It doesn't look like it's extra water, so I'm not sure that's what's going on. So that's why we think maybe there's something wrong with the board or something in the dam, because it doesn't look like we're getting a lot of water.
Ron Parent, 50, you took your point up in North Swansea. Historically, and I walk around that pond a lot, and I've been living on the pond for 11 years, and every year there are five boards out and five boards back in, and right now there are only four boards sitting on that deck. I mean, it's been that way every, I've been coming to that once since I was 78, way back in 62, but anyway, that one down. But anyway, that's, it's a real problem. I mean, I have, I have $500 worth of damage done to my dock last year because of the ice pulled it up. And it's going to happen again. It's all of our, I could walk, we always, every fall and every spring, we rake our beach areas. We walked Lump 32 and picked up all the beer bottles and cans that were thrown into the car. You can't, it's impossible, there is, I throw no beach at all, just water right up. And it's not only right now, it's in the summer, we're getting erosion, that pond's going up and it's going down to the set level then. And if you went to the bowl landing or the beach area, you look at what land is left there and how much has evaded in the last two or three years because of this, this up and down action that we're getting on the pond now. And I think it goes back to what Mike said, that if you go up and look at that diversion dam, all the gears are gone, everything is gone out of, there used to be a gear driving a, like, guillotine that goes up and down and stops the water. There's nothing there anymore. I think Joe, a couple of years ago, didn't he try to stick a couple, two by sixes down in the bottom there, but it didn't work.
You'll look into it.
So what did you mean by five boards?
There are three, five, two by sixes, I'm not sure whether they hold the water level at a certain level that we want. And sometimes now we're at five and a half, is that correct? The half, we brought it up a little bit for voting or whatever. But you take the five boards out and it goes down to a certain level, I mean, that's...
But this year it's not going down?
No, there's only four boards sitting there. So I believe, unless they took one board with them, or one board broke, or, you know, I don't know.
So the morgues are set aside?
The board was sitting, he's got his sons in the pond, or it would have been next spring, it's his...
And it could be there's a half board still, but who else? I mean, that...
No, it's a full, it's got to be a full board, there's six boards altogether plus a half board.
They took the six board out, put a half board in, and so that six boards there. And then they removed, see half board as well, and then there should be four others.
And so these four others, they're set aside? I'm just trying to figure out where...
Yeah, we have half boards there, we only, we're only counting four and a half, you know, but we don't know if, you know, if there's a moving and putting them there, there should be another board there.
And so there's a possibility there's no boards?
Uh...
Not sure. No, I think that, I think if there's four and a halves visible, then that means there's two missing. So they're, so they're either in the pond or one of them's been taken somewhere for repair. That's, that's a guess, but...
So we could have one board, two boards, or no boards?
No, we have either one or two in the dam.
There's at least one in there, because otherwise the level is down.
But wouldn't it be down anyway?
Normally there's one board, normally there's one board in over the limit. So we're seeing higher, that board is at least, at least that one board is there, there might be more there than more.
Okay.
That's, that's the reason.
I'll, I'll... Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks. I've never seen it, I've seen the one on Swansea Lake, so I have a visual, but don't really get confused, so yes, I will, thank you. When's our next meeting?
The calendar is on the agenda later, but I think this is destined next week.
Okay. So we'll be prepared for next week? If not sooner?
I won't be here.
Your honor, your honor.
Thank you. Anything else?
There is also the, there's a fence there that's in that board area that's fallen down.
Yeah, we're working on getting that.
Waiting for the water to go down to fix it.
Get your headphones.
Anybody online? Public input?
Jane Johnson?
John Andrews. Okay, well, along to capital improvement plan committee chair Steve Fudd.
Heather brought over and printed some, Stephen sent over some updated stuff, where I thought it was only one section, but I guess there was more info, so it was, I emailed them earlier if you saw it, but...
Let's just go first.
First few pages.
First two read.
Okay. If you turn, I don't know what you have.
That is the 1117.
On the whole report, it will be page two. The capital budget year will be...
So page 22 in the back there.
This compares the current year to the proposed budget year and shows the difference. And it shows the difference by department as well as individual account. And it comes out to $101,000 increase for the coming budget year or approximately a 10% increase. So if you turn to the next page, we're going to look at what this means. First thing is each year we have one-off items. Last year we had $150,000 going into the new fire station. Actually, we had a total of 300, but 150 was coming from undesignative ponds, not part of this budget. So we had a one-time item last year of 150 that we don't have this year. We also have suggested appropriating $80,000 for Mount Caesar Library. So in effect, we increased the real budget difference on a recurring basis, which is what we need to run the town on a cash basis year over year by a walloping $171,000 bucks or 17%. When you lay on top of that increased debt service, it becomes an increase year over year of approximately $280,000. And baked into the pie by the virtue of timing of bonds, and I repeat, baked into the pie, is another $263,000 coming in 2025. Alarming numbers. Moving down to major increases, I attempted to group them in what I saw the underlying causes as. The biggest and the largest is $80,000, which is simply inflation numbers for our major equipment in town, DPW, police, and fire. There are no new vehicles being added or anything like that, it's just the cost of these things is going off the roof. When we can get them, and we can't always get them. I know the Chiefs have problems getting cruisers, DPWs have problems getting trucks, and the fire truck is an ongoing issue. But these are the non-bonding fire trucks, the smaller stuff, and anybody who's bought a pickup lately knows what's happened to pickup prices. So it's $80,000, pretty much as nearly as I can look at it, simple in inflation. The other difference is a timing difference. In the past, we've used two revolving funds for capital items, one for recreation, which we have eliminated this year due to the long overdue rebuild, that for recycling, and the other for recreation, which I'll deal with in another minute. But we had thought and got lulled into the feeling that they were running a surplus from their programs during the summer. And in fact, they haven't been for the past couple of years. And what had happened was we didn't draw down from that fund for several years, so it became quite large, well over $100,000. And we were living fat happy on that for a while. Well, that party's over. In my comments section, I can address it now. I think, one, we have to look at a recreation's budget very carefully in the out years. They're planning on spending as much as $600,000 on brownfield, which is a lot of money for a baseball park. I think that it has to go under more scrutiny for both getting more revenue in to offset costs and to look at long-term planning. Brownfield is an important asset, but I, you know, there are certain finite limits as to how much one can spend. And of course, they should look at grants too. An important point. So by operation of recycling funds coming off, it's up another $75,000. We have a special item, more or less, which is the Denman Thompson, the steel bridge redecking, and we've got a reserve funds for that as we're pretty much alone by ourselves at that redecking cost. No state funds, no grant funds. And then the other net stuff in there. So that's pretty much what's happened on a cash basis. We'll go into bonds in a minute, but that's pretty well the push and pull of the budget garden. Any questions on that? It's not a pretty picture, but I think it's pretty accurate as to what's going on.
One question on, relates to Denman Thompson, Steve. I understand we might be getting some one-time state aid focused on bridge repairs. If that were to come through, would you want us to offset, reduce that amount so we can lower the...
It would be very nice.
That's what I figured.
Assuming we don't have another bridge.
Right.
It's always something.
I haven't gotten an amount yet, but I think it should be more than that amount, so...
It would be helpful. On other observation, as I mentioned, recreation needs some work, which Mike and I have talked about, is revenues and whatnot. And it's hard to get a good feel for recreation until the whole process of the summer programs sugars out and all the bills come in, which is generally red about now. So it's, it's lagging, which means during the summer, you really can't tell a whole lot. It's got sugar out at the end.
Well, and the worst numbers were a result of actually success of hiring and retaining more staff this year, which obviously has a cost to it, so...
And to be commended for that.
Right, exactly.
Not an easy thing. Recycling has some big ticket items on down the road, mainly bailers. They, we've upped them a couple times, and their revolving fund has come off, so we've got a self-fund for it now. And we've indicated a number for them of $65,000 per year going into their capital equipment reserve. They have a lot of equipment there, not as much as DPW, probably comparable to beliefs. And we have to let some time go to see what the right number will be. But the horizontal bailer, which is over $100,000, is one item that sort of sticks out, and I think next year we have to look at that more carefully. Fire, building, and equipment. We have two warrant articles coming up, we think, this coming year, one for the fire station, one to replace engine number two, which is the one that we patched up and got our three years out of, and now it's time to do a new one. I, and after that, when we get to bonds, we need another, we need to replace the ladder truck at some point, and we're going to need another engine at some point, two huge ticket items. Given what's happened in Swansea, which is very good news to, at least economically, not to everybody's personal liking, but we have a lot of higher rise apartments coming in, and we have a, we're going to have a good bump in our population and our tax basis, a huge bump. But we're going to need fire apparatus for that. And it's just a word of caution, I realize I differ with all of this, but the federal warrant articles pass, it's, I view, an essential item now, and we have to somehow get behind these things and replace this equipment if nothing else can remain in our ISO rating. Sidewalks are still a work in progress that Michael and I talk about and sorting out the grants and how much it will cost, but it's still a work in progress, and I don't think we really have our sea legs as to how the funding's going to come out for them. And I've read recently along Route 10, it's proposed to build a sidewalk down to Market Vasco, and that's not on our radar yet. But it's not on anybody's radar yet, but it's one more thing that's coming. As I mentioned, warrant articles, give us your fire station engine number one. Road rehab disappointingly has to resort to form of bonding or actually borrowing. Michael's worked at a low-cost source for a loan there, but I'm disappointed that we had to return to borrowing for roads. We did our big bond deal, thinking that we could go from that point on. At some point, we're going to have to hit a hard ceiling on road work with other things. FEMA grants, I understand, I just noted in passing, are still undecided, open air, the percentage in.
Correct.
And that, that it would major impacts on all aspects of the town budget. New debt is at elevated levels before I turn to new debt. Any questions? The next page simply has the past budget stretched out over seven years. This year plus the six budget, which are mandated by the statutes. They're pretty level. But inflation will, if it continues at the present elevated levels, will have some impact on that. The action is debt service. And as you recall, CI PC looks at the total town obligation for capital projects as cash into the reserve funds plus debt service on our debt, because that's what hits the tax bill. Debt service, if you look down at the next page, is because of total for total capital debt service, capital expenditures, increases dramatically. In fact, it doubles, more than doubles within a two-year period. We don't have much debt running off. The police station will be paid off in two, in two years, and beyond that, not much coming off in debt service on the capital side. Happily, I believe in three and a half years, the disparate debt will be paid off, which will be a bonanza for the town. But it shouldn't have any impact on capital projects. That's a sizable increase, and when you look at the proposed debt service, there really isn't anything that you can say we don't need. It's all there, and with elevated interest rates, it's going to cost us more. I'm not sure where interest rates will go next year, it's, I bet a lot of people bet a lot of money on it. I think they'll be pretty steady, and they might even tail off a bit, but they're a heck of lot more than they were, they're going to be probably double what we're used to paying. And I go through on the page after that the detailed assumptions as to debt service term and rates. You'll notice that rates are approximately doubled from a couple of years ago. The page after that labeled macro analysis simply shows where the new debt is being incurred. where the new debt is being incurred. And one is critical building of improvements or new in the case of the fire station. And I note that these are placeholder. Uh it's fire station two, the DPW shed, which has to happen. And the forever promised never delivered town. Uh and the other is roads. Um the inclusion to complete out uh Winchester and California. Uh fire is, as I mentioned, engine two, then ladder one, then engine one. Possibly engine one can be stretched out. I think engine two, we're we're there with. The ladder might get one more year, but you know, we'll be playing with fire after. The uh self contained breathing apparatus, uh it's a just a given. Uh so it's not a lot of latitude there that I see. And that's the texture. Questions, comments from the committee members here?
Steve, I I missed it during our meetings, but engine two, is there a reason why it's on that schedule now and can't be pushed out?
It possibly could get pushed out one more year. The thinking was you had to authorize it uh in advance if you want to buy a used piece of equipment. And so to get the warrant up, you don't have to pull the trigger. But once otherwise, if it breaks, we're you know, very bad. And it is limping, and probably we could get one more year out of it. But everybody felt on the committee that you might as well get the warrant article out there. Because when you go shopping for used hardware, it's a hit or miss thing, it's on the market now, but it's not gonna be on the market much longer. If you order new, there's as much as an eighteen month delay. And uh new would be detrimental to our budget in the extreme. Uh and the idea of buying a combined uh fire engine or pump or a rescue eliminates one whole vehicle from the department, which I think is a great idea. So that's where it comes down. Can it wait a year? Yeah, probably should it? What?
Oh, I understand. So two thousand one engine and a two thousand rescue, so trying to replace it with one truck.
All right.
And then there's the issue of if it is station and station two, and we don't have a station two that can fit the new truck. We'll take something else then.
Oh, the webs we weave. And then maybe town hall could get done. Anything else? I'd like to thank all the help I got from the town staff and the committee.
That's it all. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Police chief Joe Gonzalez.
Evening.
Evening.
My friend?
Yes.
User friendly.
Basically, it won't change at all as far as the budget's concerned. It's pre status quo. I don't know if you have any questions.
Looks pretty lean.
Wish I was lean.
You are. By my measure, you sure are.
So are you doing something different with recruitment, or is that just because of the hiring bonus?
Uh I think we relocated the hiring bonus. That's the reason why it's much different than it is previous year.
Then it would be if we if we had to pay off a contract, I believe that's where we've posted it. So if we just did the normal bonuses, it would be in the hiring incentive program. But if we had to pay off someone's contract with their existing town, it would be paid out of there.
How are we doing with recruitment?
We just started. It's kind of a, well, officially.
Restart. Restart.
Nice ad to the newspaper or something.
Yes, so we've got a couple of applications. Uh we have someone who's interested in part time and who's certified. Hoping that pans out, it would be a great addition. So we'll work hard on that, see if that can make that happen.
We we were back to fully staff basically briefly, which is why. Because when you say start, I don't want them, you know, something we've discussed recently, so I just wanted to make sure they were. It's not like you, you know, we talked about it six months ago, and you're just starting and kind of is being resumed, right?
Yes, I mean, you always have to be recruiting, in my perspective, constantly because you never know when someone's gonna retire or leave for a purpose. So you always like to uh put your name brand out there to attract people when there is a viable opening, which we have in the near future, so. Um but we're actively recruiting now, so.
Yeah, Edna and Chief and Julius worked on getting it posted wide wide berth. Edna was looking at a lot of veteran focused hiring websites. We've been interested on Stu's municipal association, so local newspapers. So they're trying to trying to cast a wide net.
Are you finding other communities with substantial signing bonuses?
Yes, they do.
So what are what are we competing against?
I think a lot of communities are offering ten thousand. I saw one thirty thousand. They're up there. I think the more common ones you'll find would be ten thousand, but there are those that go above ten thousand. Especially a certified officer, it's tough to come by.
Do you do you foresee that we'll need to be in that realm?
It would be nice to be in the ten thousand range, so we're kind of in the medium, so to speak. Not into lower portions. Um I really like to bring out people who wanna be here, they're not here for money. Those are few and I find, so.
Part of the challenge can be also you get the incentives really high, and then your just employees say, well, I'm already here. So what are you what are you doing for me? So it is there's a little bit of that balance, too.
You have a lot of loyal employees, so very fortunate.
But so far, we haven't had to delve into that to any great degree. Let me, no, to any great degree.
Delve into the.
The hiring bonus at that level.
Uh we've had success. We've had full manning, which is a blessing. I don't think you find any other agency that are fully manned. That's that doesn't happen nowadays, so we've been very fortunate in that respect. Um but you never know, we come across hard times if we lose another officer, so it's tough to replace. We hired an officer this summer. He's going to the police academy in January. He won't graduate the police academy until April. Then he has a little FTO to finish, so it takes a long time to break someone on. You lose someone in a few weeks, a month, to replace him several months to a year.
Sure. And how are we coming with interior repairs?
We haven't really moved forward in that. Our department's busy, uh so I think in next month or so, the L Street has some time. They can come on in and do some minor repairs.
Should be good with the work.
Yep, we did have a couple of issue with the fire alarm. Um that's gonna need to be addressed in the near future. They replaced all the older alarms in the front of the building. That was rather expensive, not a foreseeable expense. Uh we had a plumbing issue with the water, a pipe, both pipe uh pin burst that had to be fixed. Uh that was an expense we weren't anticipating. Uh and we also had a Peter for down because of the storm, and that was very costly.
Are are the fire alarm repairs budgeted for year?
We'd like to put that into the building maintenance, uh because those things can be reoccurring, um so.
But we're covered for it.
Well, we made up for it. I mean, it it went over line item because we weren't expecting that cost. It was substantial. They came back three or four times, tried to cycle what was the issue with this recurring alarm. Uh and it could be more issues or problems with it. So it needs to be looked at.
So who who schedules that? Do you work that, and is Mike Jasmine work that?
Who much cover everything.
So you'll get that taken care of.
As long as there's funding for it.
So where but is the funding in the budget, or is it in?
Well, we can take advantage of it. It's early in the budget, so there'll be money there. But we don't know if something else could happen down the road later in the year. Hopefully not. Maybe get by a few years and no major items, and then all of a sudden you get hit with a few.
Sure. Michael, do we have money in the reserve?
Well, do we know how much we're talking about?
Well.
There's not a it's not it's not the largest reserve because the building was obviously rehabbed to some degree. You know, within not too distant future, so it's not a huge reserve.
Well, plumbing was well over four dollars, you know, actually over six hundred dollars and.
No, but I'm talking it sounds like you're talking about future work, right? So do we have an estimate of what that future work will cost?
No, I missed it, but future work. I mean, it's like, you know, so much money you wanna spend, not much. But it can be very costly, so it needs work.
Can we get a handle on that fairly soon?
Yes, sir.
How's the new Tahoe doing?
Beautiful.
If it's gonna work out.
It's great.
Better than the explorers.
Much better.
Are they readily available or?
Uh they're available. And then again, you never know. Yeah, the auto industry, as you well know, you can't really anticipate everything that's gonna happen, uh so. For example, Ford PIU went up nine thousand dollars in one year. Who was expecting that? I certainly wasn't, uh so you never know. Finding parts now for Ford's is difficult, but two newer vehicles have recalls. It's a it's simple fix for the most part, but they don't have the parts. And when you call and ask about it, call us back in the spring, or we'll get back to you in the spring about it. So it's it's very dicey.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's not hugely significant, but it's something to mention. The sub sub budget for the regional prosecutor's service that we utilize through the county that's seen an increase due to the expiration of the felony first program, which hopefully you could explain better than I could, but just to note, it's it's in this to the back of the second page down below, but it's a little more than the normal, you know, three to five percent increase. So I thought it was worth worth pointing out.
I mean, they're having difficulties with manpower also. So they're they've pushed down more work towards the police departments to do. Uh so they don't have to do some of the mundane issues and items that they have to handle. So we're kind of doing some of that work. But it's like anything else, everything's going up in price. It's difficult to, you know, pay people prices that they wanna get paid.
We're finding that.
Yes, indeed.
So the twenty thousand dollar increase in that line item is just for the prosecution services, or is it what you're having to pay our staff to do the work?
Our prosecution.
And we're spending more of our resources.
And we're spending more of our resources to do some of their work that they can't figure out. People don't have the personnel, you're right.
You want to good news, Michael?
It's still cheaper than hiring your own prosecutor, so.
Yeah, I'll give you that. Thank you.
It might be nice.
Thank you. David Engle.
Evening.
How are you?
I'm using this call.
Thank you. Good job, sir.
What I've been over here to hold was that I said if we have the same weather in eight months and we talk about one day.
Right. At least it sounds that way.
It's all perspective, right? So what's gonna talk to you that I've been here a couple of times, I think, talking about this. We've been to this aviation group and a subsidiary company they have to do a market study and then uh market and try to attract business to the developed airport. So when I I met this company at a at a conference and they gave a presentation on developing land airports and realized that this might be the first one to bring on board. Uh this company, they specialize, that's all they do, is they look at property at airports that need to be developed, and then they've got connections with all these aviation businesses and industry, and they try to connect them. When I brought it forward before, there was some concerns in the proposal, and we were able to set up a virtual meeting with Michael and this city manager from Key, myself and consultants. We go through the proposals. It was pretty enlightening, I think, because just having them explain the proposals, at least to me, it looked like there was a lot more that we were gonna get out of the product than what I actually read in the proposal. And on the the first uh one I have here with the aviation group consultant, on the back is their appendix saying, which really breaks down what the deliverables are in that part. Uh so the market feasibility study, uh basically look at what our market has, what uh what our opportunities are, what our challenges are. And then also look at competitive airports and the same thing there. And they're gonna with that information, they're gonna decide whether they would move forward if we chose not to do the marketing, if they figure we have a product. Looking at it generally, to begin with, we we did our lady study, shared that with them, and they were pretty positive looking at that. So we can have absolutely good stuff there. So um one of the things that I I believe Michael brought up in that discussion was it was something in the proposal about um other reimbursables, if they had to travel or something like that, that there could be additional fees. Uh after that meeting, they agreed that anything that they did would have to be approved by us. They wouldn't be able to just do that and bill us, so we would have to pre approve it before they could do that. So there'd be no surprise charges on that. I believe that was the only question we had on this part of the proposal. Uh we did also discuss how the payment would work, and we were splitting that between Key and Swansea. Uh there'd be two payments, a down payment and then another payment at the end of the product. Uh what we discussed is either the city of Key would pay one and Swansea would pay the other. Either way, we'd pay the same amount, one would just pay the down payment, one would pay the which was acceptable to them.
And I would think if if we wanted to proceed, I would recommend we redo the down payment now because we have most of the funds available in the economic development advisory committee budget that's gonna go unspent. So that way we wouldn't have to add it into our budget for next year. And it's in the middle of their fiscal year, so they don't care because they're the July to June fiscal year.
I have my budget. We could move forward that pretty quick. Um I really think that document, uh you know, whether it came out positive for us to be able to move forward with with the brokerage part, or otherwise, there's gonna be a lot of valuable information in there that we can use. We try to market ourselves. We try to market ourselves or going out to somewhere else.
Is it possible, David, after the market analysis, they would say, we don't think your airport is worth?
I think that's their whole purpose is they don't want to get into the brokerage part of it.
Right.
They don't really know. Plus, it might be preliminary work for them to know how they're gonna work it too. I think that's a big part of it is they're gonna say, okay, we're gonna look at it, so now we know where to focus and what our challenges are and what our strengths are. But I think there is that possibility. I don't think it's a strong possibility. I think we've got very marketable portions there.
How long does something like this take?
Is it a two-year project to do?
Was that for this study or was that the marketing?
That was, that was the marketing.
That was the actual marketing.
I'll have to look, actually, Michael's got the actual proposals too, what the original. I think we talked about that, it was over three months.
Yeah, I think there's, have it in here too. I don't know if they had it. Do you guys, do you remember, did it have a schedule in there? I don't see where it says, but three months sounds, sounds true.
Yeah, it's hard. That was for the study and then I think it was the 20. Four months. So, and that's the second part, Aviation Property Network, it actually subsidiary, subsidiary of Business Aviation Group. So one work together, they do the market and tenant procurements. And again, this is the part that really impressed me is their opening statement has extensive real estate knowledge and experience and leading aviation real estate provider in an niche market. So most of that, I think that what we were really focused on there, which was a big hurdle, I think, or maybe even a wall that we didn't want to get through, both City of Keene and Town of Swansea was the, how long the percentage of revenue from the lease would, would, that they had in their proposal that it was any extensions or renewals, which could be a long time. So talking to them about that, they agreed and said that their good payments would only be for the initial term, which we'd be looking at 20 years. So we would probably do a 20-year term with a 20-year renewal option. So it would only be for the first 20 years, which I, that was, that was probably a no-go with both, both the City of Keene and the Towns of Swansea and they amended that in their proposal.
And that would be paid more or less upon, upon signing, right? It's not, we don't, we'd make the payments over 20 years.
Correct. Yeah, one, one was on, there was two parts to it. One was on actually collecting lease revenue and one is on signing agreements. So pretty, pretty much the same.
And I've put in here the board side, but just, I use like one of the CNS hangers, let's just have an example. Kind of look, because it had an assessment, it had a square footage. And if, you know, looking at a profit of over $80,000 over the 20 years, even just on the, I think that was just on the town portion of the tax rate. So be paying like 9,500 upfront, but over 20 years, you'd be bringing in $80,000 profit for taxes. So it, it is a little bit upfront, but I think the percentage is at the point where it would work.
And also just clarification, we're not looking for people to build private hangers, this is to bring in businesses. You know, it'd be jobs, it would be revenue. We're marketing specifically for aviation businesses. And again, I've mentioned this a couple of times, because of our grant insurances, we can't develop properties that has access to the airfield unless it's an aviation business. So we're kind of restricted to bring in aviation business, but that'll work great too. I think we've got a great possibility to do that and it's gonna help the businesses at their point.
Michael, you're, the 9,500 number, where, where did that come from?
Um, did I include my calculation?
Did you do that? The study number?
Yeah.
I was at the, no, I think. Yeah, that was from, no, I did it based on the percentage of the.
Of the lease.
Of the lease, I believe. Yeah, so that, so I was like an eighty, this one that I used as the example was the 80,000 square foot lease. So I did that over 20 years and their rate is 30 cents per thousand. And so I got to a total commission of 28, eight and then. Well, it was 9,500, that gives me 14,400. Maybe that was for the original study.
Yeah, it took that, half of the original would be 9,270.
Oh, yeah, factoring the initial investment, yeah, round, okay, I rounded that up to 9,500. Yeah, I'm sorry, that was the original study.
Okay, so we're, we're sharing in the commission and that would be paid upfront?
Right, upon, more or less upon execution.
Successful execution of the lease.
So. Okay.
So the commission in that example was 14,400 for us, not 95. Yeah, the 95 was the initial study.
And, and so the 80,000, that's based on what our current.
Current tax rate, yeah.
The expectation would be from the assessed value.
Right.
Would that be for the initial 20-year period?
Yeah.
Okay, so and then you've got the tax revenue, because it's, it's not gonna be over epic 20 years, right? So we would, we would expect anybody in a built-up facility to be here 40, 50 or more.
But basically, even only, even if we only got one development out of the study and then hiring them, we have over an $80,000. Again, using it as an example, a bunch of caveats, but it wouldn't take, it's not like we need to get, we need to get like 10 businesses in here for it to, for it to break even and it would only really take.
If, if there's no success in bringing anyone in, there's no cost.
Yeah, it's just the year on the out, the initial study fee.
I think the study will let you know whether it's worth pursuing. Anyway. The expectation is that the study will come back favorably, but.
Right.
But if they're not interested in moving forward, that pretty much gives you an indication.
Yeah, if, if they, if they, if they decide to move forward, it really doesn't cost us anything unless they bring in us.
Great.
All right.
What do you need from us, David?
Um, just go, go ahead. We'll have them, we have a proposal, we'll just, that.
Okay. Page four. All right, I'll make that motion Beverly.
A motion's been made and I'll second to authorize the expenditure of the 9,500 from the 2023 EDAC budget. All in favor? Aye. The ayes have it.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I'm excited to see what this, what comes forth from this.
Thanks, David.
You're welcome.
You too, Michael.
Thank you, Qualter, rail trail committee.
Yep.
Hey, guys.
Aye.
Okay, so budgets, we changed from 23 to going to 24. Just to quickly review, we've got some admin. Plus, that's basically short of Beverly, she does all the, I'm saying Beverly. Doing that. She has some equipment rental. We're looking again, an excavator with some mower on it. The digging bucket, basically keep the ditches and culverts clear, try to avoid washouts, which I'll bring to you later. Probably the focus next year will be on the Cheshire Trail, we did a lot of work this year on the Ashwood Trail. Uh, they're printing copies and publicity promotion kind of wants those together. This is, you know, purchasing brochures, rack cards, things like that. We continue to pass those out. Bruce has a brochure holder down on the Ashwood Trail near him, he said, you know, he filled it quite frequently. So people do take them, get the way out. We might do a little tweak to it, it's been about two, three years since we modified it, so we might do some design work to. Then the next thing or last item is trail maintenance. So as we do all this work, there's costs to run the equipment, like the fuel, any oils we might need, sharpening blades, replacing parts, parts can break. So cover those, you know, costs in the base of, base of the operations. So that's all the line items, total $7,400, which is seeing as 2023. So any questions on that?
You, you look pretty tight on the trail maintenance. Is that, you comfortable with that?
Uh, yeah, we are. We discussed it at our trail committee meeting and everybody was pretty comfortable sticking with what we have. We've also received recently a donation from a Swansea resident to do rail trail work. And we're planning to use that, plus we're hoping to use some money from this year to spend next spring to fix the section down in Westport. Joe's trying to help us with the culvert down there, but because of all the flooding and work he had, he won't get to it until probably another couple of weeks. And we need the culvert fixed before we can do the final crush gravel and trail surface. So we think we're gonna have a couple of grand left over this year. We'd like to use next year plus this 2,400 we got from our private resident to do that work. I also work with.
How do they carry that over, Michael?
So I spoke to Bruce and then Mike emailed me, I emailed him back. So basically, as long as we have a signed contract or proposal, we can encumber the funds from the 2023 budget.
So Bruce is working to try to get.
Yep. Getting all the Joe tomorrow to get the contracted information and see if they're even set for that.
Okay. Also, I have a relationship with Suzanne Bainsley, the Cheshire County Grant Writer. We're actually in the middle of writing a grant to complete all the trail surface on the Cheshire Trail through Town of Swansea. So we should be submitting that in a couple of weeks and it would cover all that. So we're trying to find other ways to make this work. So I think we're okay with what we have.
Are you still on the hunt at the casino as far as?
I checked into that. And if I remember right, so the collaborative that, regional collaborative that I run, we couldn't use that because we're an affiliate of Bike Walk Alliance in New Hampshire, which already did a submitted. And I thought municipalities weren't eligible. So I don't think we could go through Town of Swansea. But do you know if that's true or not?
I know.
Yeah. So we were stuck. I could check on the municipality part again, but I thought it was only nonprofits. I had to check into it.
Could we create something for the rail trail?
Well, it, it kind of exists with the, you're saying like creating a nonprofit or something, but. Do you have the rail trail collaborative, but you're saying that's already an affiliate?
That's an affiliate of the Bike Walk Alliance in New Hampshire, which that's the federal ID number that you use, which is what the casino wants. And they'll look and say, oh, this organization has already submitted.
So we need to hit them up from them.
So. But if we could form a 501(c)(3) somehow within the town, that would be, I don't know, we could do that. That's another.
Might not be up to us, but it might be up to.
Swansea Rail Trail.
Friends of the rail trail.
Yeah, something like that. It's an idea, Swan. Okay, so any other questions on budget? Okay, so rail trail update?
Well, it's kind of budget related, but it didn't really come up too much with the, you weren't here for Steve's presentation, but CIP committee is recommending to create a rail trail fund, capital reserve fund.
Okay.
That would be on the list.
So that gets to my sustainability handout.
Transition.
Yeah, you have to have that, you know, is that in the packet?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I have an electronic version.
Hey, do you got one?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two?
Seventy-two.
Oh, yeah.
So when the CIP came up at our trail meeting, I was asking, basically learning how all this works. And what, where it ended up is, okay, well, what does the trail committee want for capital equipment? Which then leads to, okay, well, how are we gonna manage and manage these trails going forward? So today, the way that they're maintained is a lot of volunteer labor and a lot of volunteer equipment. So Bruce is one of the guys who volunteers his equipment in his time. I volunteered some of my equipment in my time. And then we also do it through grants in this budget we have here, right? So the question is, is that how we want to manage it for the long term, right? Because I feel with a lot of volunteer, equipment, labor, although it's low cost, it's high risk. Bruce can decide in Florida next week and I can decide to follow them or something. And now, you know, you gotta try to find new people to, you know, to, to fill the gap. So I'm here today, you know, and I came up with these different ways it could be done. So you can have all volunteer, which is item one, which I kind of discussed. Item two is volunteer with some rental equipment, which we're kind of doing today because we use a grant like our TP grant to rent equipment and then we run volunteer labor. Item three is just rent equipment, don't rely on other people's equipment and do volunteer labor. And then four, you could actually contract everything, contract everything, equipment, labor, the whole bit. And five is Swansea owns everything, right? Swansea has a person running the equipment, they own the equipment, they maintain the equipment and all of that. Each item has its pros and cons, some lower cost, but higher risk. And I also included, but I won't overthrow the detail, what the cost would be if you went from a, a volunteer rental concept all the way up to a totally owned, right? I guess I'm here to just get an idea from you guys, what do you think is possible? Because then I'll take that possibility back to the rail trail committee and then we can talk about what we want to put in the CIP, right? Depending what the strategy is. If the strategy is, hey, we want to have Swansea own this, have the labor and all the equipment, then we'd start working towards the CIP plan to buy all the equipment over multiple years. If that's, people feel that's not possible, then we would do something, you know, less than that. So I'm trying to get a feel for which direction, little advice on what direction to go here, right? Continue on the path we're on, which is a lot of volunteer labor and equipment and some rental and just hope for the best or maybe start to purchase a little equipment or.
How, how do, how does the graph on the next page relate with what you just went through?
Yeah, so on the following page is what I did, you know, I said, all right, let's start with, like if in phase one, we pretty much rented, you know, everything, what would it cost, right? And what's that rental cost? And then there's maintenance with rent too, because when you're renting, you could have, you have fuel costs. You could, you could, like we, we showed a couple of hydraulic lines, the sheer way to replace them, you know, that kind of thing, right? So what I tried to show in each phase is if, like phase one, if you just rented, you know, it'd be $14,000 to rent everything that we have on here, which is tractor and brush hog and dump truck. Excavator, the whole bit.
I understand that, Mike. I'm curious, how do these phases relate to the fives?
Yeah, so, so the phases is, is going from the rental type of concept, which is item three, to Swansea owning. So it's from three to five. So it's moving from three to get to five.
And it's just different ways to get there.
And it's just a phased approach to get there, you know? It's not, instead of buying it all upfront, we rent a little, buy a little, rent less, buy more and eventually after phase seven, you own it.
So the, the first block, the cost is, how, how does that relate? Because it looks like there's both a rental option, a purchase option.
Right, so in a year, like for example, in phase one, nothing's being bought, it's all being rented.
I'm sorry, my, my fault. The, the block just before.
Oh, oh, that's just the cost of the items. So that's just, you know, for example, 40 horse tractor. So that's just, you know, for example, forty horse tractor, it to rent that for a month costs nineteen hundred twelve, one thousand nine hundred eighty.
I got it. So if you bought it, it was fifty.
If you buy it, it would cost fifty thousand.
So you're you're kind of, if I understand right, you're asking for input on this, on the on the phased approach versus the purchase approach. And you're also asking for advice with regard to the the one through five of of how we see the program proceeding. Is that fair?
I I would say it's probably more on one through five, because if you guys advised Swansea owning, then I think we would come back with a proposal on how to get them. Right? My phased approach is one idea, right? I go back to the committee and say, here's one idea. Let the committee come back with a proposal. Okay, that's my thinking.
So my take is is a valid one that you presented, that Bruce goes to Florida and you follow and we have nothing.
Right.
So I'm wondering if if it's something that could be researched over the course of the year.
Yeah.
With portion of it going to D P W and a portion of it going to recreation. Because it seems to me D P W would have some of this equipment, could need some of this equipment.
Right.
And and have the staffing to do both of what they're doing now, plus the trails.
Yeah.
And then like with with Bruce's bulletin or brochure, we we could be handling that through the rec department.
Yeah.
Or something else. So there'd be a delineation of duties and we already have the staffing in place to some extent. There could be a weaning process so that you don't go to Florida right away, which in the end will be a few years.
Let you take a vacation.
Because there would certainly be a learning curve with all that. And with all the progress that you guys have made, and I'm sure Michael's heard it as well. It it's a strong attribute for living in Swansea. It's amazing to me that people would know about what you all have done in the last five or six years to to make these trails viable.
Right, yeah, and I think it's coming along very nicely.
Very, very nicely. You've done a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think creating the capital reserve fund is something I've been suggesting they think about because we're, we've done a great job developing and improving these assets, but they are assets that are going to require more and more directed costs too. So by creating the fund, that's the step, that's, that's an important step to recognizing it's another piece of infrastructure that if you don't own it.
Another piece of infrastructure. And we put a lot of work. I don't want it to fall apart. You know, if it's, if it's neglected for three, four years, it starts to fall apart. And so you gotta stick and stay on top of it.
Sure.
Mother Nature's out there every day trying to do what she can. All right, so your proposal, your advice to us is.
It's just off the top of my head.
Yeah.
So I think.
Well, one idea.
We should talk about it, maybe something concrete before rumors get started.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All that. It should be a thoughtful process.
All right, so, well, I'll start with contacting Joe with the with the idea that you had of, you know, some of it being the maintenance part being in D P W and then the rec department handling, like, all the marketing kind of stuff. And see how he responds and how she responds to that.
I don't want to speak for him, but I don't, I think manpower would be a concern to take to take that on. You guys are putting in a lot of time out there and I think that.
Yeah, I have numbers around all that, because we track all our labor, so we track how many hours we did this year. And so I kind of looked at that and then I kind of extrapolated from that. If you had a person, how many hours would it take and all that? So I could review that with Joe, and maybe he could, like, okay, we can do this, but we can hire a person part time every summer or something like that. Because that's about what it would take. All right, great, good.
Sounds good.
You okay with status of the rail trails? What's happening? Open to hear that? Okay, so this year, we um, we had an excavator for three months, which we got from R T P grant, the Recreation Trails Program grant. And we were able to do maintenance on the trail from Riley Conservation, actually right at the gate at the Riley Conservation area, uh, all the way to Tower Lane in Westport. Okay, we did bypass all the washouts, which is from Pine Street down to the south old Rook Ave road crossing, which is two miles, maybe mile and three quarter, because of all the washouts, we can't get through. Uh, but we did everything else, which is mowing with the flail mower, anti mowing, all that kind of stuff, uh, ditch clearing and clearing culverts and that kind of thing. I thought it went really well. We got a lot done. It looks a lot better. It's, it's, I thought it was a great job. Um, so that's happened there. And then on the Cheshire Trail, wasn't too much this year. I did some mowing out there, pretty much. Couple culverts got clogged, cleared those, but not not as much work on that trip this year.
Where are we seeing the most activity?
Uh, well, if you look at numbers, the Ashrillup Trail gets more traffic, I think, because it's connected to Keene. And the Cheshire Trail's severed at Route one oh one. Okay, so there's no, there's no bridge over one oh one. And Keene has a project to fix that. They have a project called the Transportation Heritage Trail Project that they're working on to complete the trail from Eastern Ave in Keene up to one oh one, put a bridge over one oh one, upgrade the Stone Arch Bridge to current pedestrian standards, put a bridge over Swansea Tractor Road and then connect with us. Okay, that's why I want to get our portion of the trail in Swansea done, because that would encourage the D O T and everybody else involved to do the Keene project, because, hey, Swansea's got their part done and downtown Keene's got their part done. How about this thing in the middle? So, because a lot of people don't even know, coming out of Keene, that the trail, the Cheshire Trail continues down in Swansea. I met a couple of people out there one day and I s- and just started chatting. I said, where'd you start? They said, at the beginning. I go, where's that? They go, right at one oh one where the bridge is. I said, well, you know, the thing goes to Bellas Falls, right? They didn't know that. So I think that's, it's a big reason. And the Ashrillup Trail's been, you know, Bruce did a bunch of work on it years ago and it's in, it's in pretty good shape, especially coming out of Keene or in the Swansea. So that one, to me, gets more traffic. But I've seen more traffic on the Cheshire Trail now that we're fixing it. When you build it, it will come.
Seems to be more traffic at all purpose now with with people parking, and I assume they're using the trail because they're parking in that area.
Yeah, 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 yeah. They 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 put in like three or six spots for us here, and I see people using that.
There's a heavy, heavy bike traffic now this year.
On the Cheshire.
I put the trail game down there. I couldn't believe how many bikes. And not just during the the daylight hours, absolutely stupid. Early morning, you know, drivers going out and you see the headland bobbing.
That's correct.
The COVID actually greatly increased traffic on the rail terminals. And I think it's, it's sustaining. And then I think another thing is the e-bikes. We, I see lots of e-bikes out here. I talk, stop chatting with people and a lot of people that haven't ridden the bike in years on an e-bike, now they're, they're out there doing it. So I think that's, I think that's increasing traffic as well.
It's not a motorized wheeled vehicle?
Well, according to the state, a class one and two is not a motorized bike. Right? So e-bikes, class one and two are allowed on their, on their property. But it's becoming an issue because there's a whole bunch of other, uh, they're called P E Vs, personal electric vehicles that are just going really fast. Somebody sent me a video of one of those, you know, those fat tire Unos, Unibikes or Unibike. You you stand like, stand like on two platforms and it's a big fat tire. The manufacturer that advertised this can go eighty seven miles an hour. Eighty seven. So imagine you're on ninety one doing seventy five heading up to, you know, I don't know, Whitewater Junction and this thing goes by you. So I, I see, I hope I see more regulation coming defining these things in different classes, because there's motorcycles out there now, there's mopeds. There's all kinds of electric stuff. But because it's not well defined, you can't find them on trails. Although I've had cameras out on the Cheshire Trail and I see cars and trucks and all kinds of stuff out there, so.
Did the bridge by Dartmouth Road get redone?
Uh, it's, it's working on it now. It's actually coming out really nice.
It's over halfway done.
It's really nice.
Can the excavator go across that or no?
I'm sorry?
Can the excav- excavator go across that?
When we get done with it this time, it'll should be able to.
Yeah, absolutely. You should go and check it out.
They, they probably, the timbers.
I'll be dead before we have to fix that. Washouts. So you're aware, right? We had a bunch of washouts back in July, uh, seven in total. The first ones, uh, parallel on the Eaton Road, like, it's two seventeen Eaton Road where we send the. And then all the way down to just north of the south old Rook Ave road crossing. There's seven. So, you know, we started, when it first happened, we contacted the Trails Bureau, we did out, went out and did a bunch of surveying, documented the whole thing. The state kept saying, we're not going to share if we're going to file for FEMA or not. Well, then last week, I get a call from a, here in McAllister, who's at Department of Natural and Cultural Resources for the state, and said, Mike, FEMA wants to come out Monday. Can you be here? So on that Monday, two people from FEMA, two people from New Hampshire Homeland Security and Emergency Management, this guy from D N C R, two people, I think, from Human Services or something. There was like ten of us. And we walked the whole thing. And I thought they were great. They, they looked at everyone closely. They were taking dimensions. They were writing down what do we, what was it looked like? What, how do you want to fix it? Documented that for every one of them. And the FEMA people didn't balk at all about getting it fixed and got all the reports written. This guy from D N C R is supposed to be the project lead. And I asked the FEMA guy, what's next? He says, well, we get all the reports written and submitted and it goes into a black hole. And I go, is that Washington? He goes, yep. So my plan is to call the D N C R guy every two or three weeks. Mike knows how I do that.
Two and a half weeks.
What's D N C R?
Uh, Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, uh, which is.
It's the Trails Bureau.
Which is a state department and under them is the Trails Bureau and I think the Parks Department and other.
Some of them changed.
So there's hope that FEMA will outbid to fix these washouts. Some of them are pretty significant.
That's what I didn't even want to ask, but what does that mean for possible re uh, reallocation of the program?
Oh, I still still got to fix the trail.
Okay, so still.
So FEMA's only going to fix the washouts. They're not going to fix the trail.
So stick with those segments that we have.
And I'd say still stick with all of them.
Okay.
No, no change there.
So no more changes?
Yeah, no more changes. So I'll keep you.
Have you been in contact with Jane Shaheen's office?
Uh, I think when this all started, she got contacted. I contacted our local reps, you know, there was a lot of noise made early. Chris Coats got involved, you know, how are we going to fix this? All that kind of stuff. But that was back when nobody knew the state was even going to contact FEMA. And the reason they were hesitating is they've gotten burned in the past. They've fixed stuff and never got reversed. They kept being asked to provide more information and find this, you know, we just can't keep putting our resources out here doing this, right? But something must have happened because all of a sudden I get a call and boom, they're out.
I wonder if Maggie's office would be receptive since they were here back in July.
You mean contact again and just?
Well, with regard to what you just did with with the group of ten and black hole and all of that, whether they could.
Push it along a little bit? Yeah, possible. I'll see how it would hurt.
Invite them for the ribbon cutting.
What, the washout?
The redone FEMA rail trail. But when they call FEMA and say, we're going to this ribbon.
Yeah, there is.
To schedule the.
Schedule the ribbon cutting now.
Next summer, so.
All right, uh, that's it for Bruce. Anything else you can think of?
Just that the one by the substation, it looks like the the Eversource may fix that one.
Yeah, I agree.
Because they've got so much interest right there.
Yep.
Right adjacent, actually on the trail, but anyway, they got so much interest there that they would impede their trying to fix something that they had to get down and.
Right.
How close?
I'm sorry. I I think they're, so they're looking to fix that and improve it so that it won't keep. This is like the fourth time.
Sure.
This is.
Second time in three, two or three years, right?
Yep, I rebuilt it once with a brain.
Is the trail, Ashrillup Trail accessible from the airport?
Uh, from the airport, no, you know, you, I mean, you gotta get on thirty two and then on Sawyer's Crossing. You know, that type of thing, cross the bridge.
Get the causeway, really.
Then. Do you remember the old bike pet committee that Steve headed up, he was chairman of it? We actually had a plan of, and a somewhat permission from the airport to go down alongside the fence and then go and come out on the older Causeway Road and come up. But he left and they kind of fell through.
I only ask because at the airport meeting, one of the points of discussion was bringing up photos to put on the website that show people walking and snapping bird pictures and all that. And I just, I didn't know how close we were to it as to where we.
Could be something there. I think there's been talk on and off, how to connect.
Connect trails.
Connected to trails east to west, right? There's no simple path, but one of them is what Bruce was saying. Go by the southern part of the airport and around and you come out. You gotta, I think it's a bridge, gotta be put over the river.
Yes.
You could come out on Causeway, which then is pretty close to the trail, you know, by the Crest Bridge.
We're gonna have to figure a way over, over there, near there anyway, to have the sidewalk continue down to the park for the boat landing. Somehow we gotta get people that are just dead ending there across.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, yeah. You got to get over that bridge with pedestrian. If if there's airport work going on now that involves, that would be open to, you know, bike and pedestrian, I'd be willing to talk to somebody about it to get.
I don't know what there is. This was more of a marketing concept.
Yeah.
I was trying to figure a way to bring Swansea into it.
Yeah.
With what you all are working on.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great if we could get to there. Even if we could just get to thirty two from the Ashrillup Trail going east. Because there is that road there. What's that class?
Sycamore.
No, class six road on the east side, I love mobile station.
Oh, Sycamore Hill?
Sycamore Hill. You go up there, then you gotta kind of cut through the woods a little bit, then you end up on, what is it, Fox Run or Shurgeville on the other side? And then you can get onto the Cheshire Trail from there. There there is a way.
Takes your life in your hands. There is a way.
Across there, ten, or twelve.
But it's not an easy way.
Sunset Drive, Sunnyside.
A lot of people walk out there even without it.
Yeah, a lot of people do walk because I bike that a lot.
I know, I had proposed when they were doing that construction, why didn't they put a sidewalk in right at the same time?
Well, that housing that's going in there now on the corner, does that get up, does that, does that come back up to the fairgrounds?
Of course.
Could there be pedestrian through that and come out of the fairgrounds?
Part of their plan is always to have some trails in there around, but anything that residents to walk.
Yeah, yeah, you know, that's an idea. So maybe something like that, that would be great. Because once you get to the all purpose store, the trail's ready. And maybe then we have to just put a crosswalk or something.
Good luck.
You got to part with that.
Yeah. Good luck with that.
Seriously, you think some of these things we've been tilting out are bad, trying to get a crosswalk, but across the state highway?
Okay.
Thank you.
All set?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike. I need some winter biking recommend, pack glove recommendations.
Oh, I have.
Okay, good.
Moving on to new business, the Grandchild Windowing Business.
Yes, and Bill called me. I thought I was saying, connect with Mike until later, but Bill asked, Mr. Javison was aware of this concept. And he was, basically, this, this aspect was part of the approach, which I think is more or less consistent to what we've been doing the last couple of years, of trying to keep the building dry. So that means windows, you know, done some of the doors and some of that stuff. It means drainage around the building. So at this point, we're only looking to apply for the grant. We're not actually, you know, spending any money or doing any work, but we don't want to apply for a grant and then say, well, we really don't want to do, replace the windows or something. So he is aware of it. He's helped. So he is aware of it. He's helped him with the quote. He's involved.
Does it fit in with the overall plan that he has with regard to structural integrity and and everything else that you know, Sly's discussed about moving it back?
I think it's, I would say replacing the windows is irrelevant to moving it back, whether we move it or not. It's going to need, it's definitely going to need new windows, no matter what we do, so.
But it does have a lot to do with the future disposition of the building.
How so?
Well, it's the camel's nose under the tent. At some point, you get to the point where you've got no choice but to rehave the building. I don't know that that discussion is.
That would be a great discussion to happen.
Well, but if you invest the money into the grants and what obligation does the grant put on the restoration of a building? And then at this point, we don't know the number to do it. It really hasn't gone to the body politics, so to speak. Just, the reason I ask was the same premature that there hasn't been a final decision about renovating the building.
That's correct.
And that is how this building is going because they had the windows all redone with the double glazing, so. Just don't.
No, I don't disagree. I think, I'm serious when I say, I'd love for that discussion to happen because it's, I'd love for that discussion to happen to make sure we know we're going in the right direction. But now at this point, they're trying to get grants, which I think is what we would want, again, assuming we want to rehab the building. If that's not the case, that's fine too, but we need the board to tell us that. So it's existing funds that are in there.
I just don't think the board is going to do that. I think it's, the town's got to get beyond, this is not one where the town's going to put in a couple hundred thousand and Pete Johnson's going to pull a million out of the air. This is one where we don't have anybody pulling money out of the air. This is one that, this is going to fall on the taxpayers based on how it's currently going. So if it's going to fall on the taxpayers, they're looking at at least seven, if not eight hundred or more to do it. And we haven't had that discussion. I'm not, I'm sure not going to recommend it. I'm not going there. It's one thing now my wife telling me we should be keeping our town buildings in good shape and all that because she looks at the cosmetics and yeah, you put a coat of paint on, it looks good. But Mike's expressed significant concern about the structural integrity of the building and what needs to be done to secure it. I just think it's premature. But if applying for the grant doesn't obligate us to anything, then I'll certainly be supportive of that. But I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be a person sitting on the board recommending to you and your staff that we go ahead and rehab that building without the town having an opportunity to weigh in and understand what the obligation is going to be.
I believe we've tried to have those opportunities by having multiple warrant articles specific to this property.
Yeah, well, let's do what I mistakenly.
You have done last time.
I did. Well, let's go for a $250,000 warrant article. Let's make it real. See if people want to do it. We did that with the Carpenter Home, not two fifty, but we did it with the Carpenter Home. We stood up in front of the body and explained why we were doing it with the Carpenter Home and what we thought the end result would be. I don't know about you, but I have no idea what the end result would be with the Grange. I really don't. I don't agree with what we're doing here. I think this should be a fully rentable space. And if there's an opportunity for people to rent it, I think it should be income producing. I don't think it should be a town hall of function. So I understand we're getting there, but we need to get to the point where this building is paying for itself and building reserves so that it can continue to pay for itself, in my opinion. And that's the way I would feel about the Grange. I just think it's a hell of an obligation.
Sounds like we should have the Grange Hall.
Well, no, I don't, that might be, that might be the way to go. I'm not, I'm not pulling, I'd like to see what happens with the Wilcox School and whether we're buying it or we get it or it goes to some other entity. Because the Wilcox School, for me, would drive a lot with the Grange because it provides parking. Maybe the Grange moves over to the Wilcox School because it would land, because it would give more land for more uses for the Grange. But I'm just repeating myself.
I have no doubt.
This is been a conundrum for us, for us ever since Jerry Bell didn't swing his boom. If he'd have swung his boom back in ninety-three, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Just like if Larry Waters hadn't called in the fire in town hall, we wouldn't be having that discussion either. So, you know, those things happen and obviously we're leaving that. But if all we're doing is going along with it to file the grant, for the grant, I'd be supportive of that.
Community town funds would already be in the Grange Hall Capital Reserve Fund, so it's not any new appropriation. It's funds that are for that purpose. So I mean, they could be, it could be, but if we said, no, we don't want to spend any money in the building, they could go back to the general fund if the voters approve that. But it's not, it's not a new appropriation. It's not new CIP funding the next year or anything, so.
Sure. But I want your heart.
Would we like to have the Grange Hall Committee at an upcoming meeting to have this discussion?
No, I don't. I think we got to get beyond that, Michael. We got to figure out some way to get, for the town to either say, yeah, we're going to go for this or no, we're not. We've been beating this damn thing for years. And just to, you know, people are asking, how come the building hasn't been paid? Didn't we allocate money to do that? And they did, but it isn't. That wasn't one of the warrant articles, whatever. So I think it was. I thought there was one that was for.
For weatherization of the bottom door.
To keep the window that had fallen out with the accident windows.
I want some paint for the front.
We can do that if you want. I think that.
And it needs to. Right?
What's that?
That's that roof leak. It needs a.
It needs everything. No, seriously.
I have to have a lay. I'll make that motion.
Second, allow the Grange Hall Advisory Committee and Swansea Preservation Society to apply for the Seventeenth Sunday to Foundation and Preservation Alliance, spring. Place the windows at Grange Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Assignment the general assessing contract. Dave Marazoff.
So Dave Marazoff is going back to his former BBA, Dave Mar, yeah, Dave, Marazoff assessing from Evan and assessing is having a business transition. So our statistical update, which would be next year, we don't have a current contract for that, so we don't need to do an assignment. But we would need to assign our general assessing, which was, I think, a four, maybe a five-year contract. So I am seeking that authorization to assign.
And you're pleased with the current performance, the way it's going?
Yes, overall.
I made the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. December meeting schedule?
I suggested we could do the first three or every other. I suggested at least no meeting the week between Christmas and New Year. Sometimes we meet if we have like a last minute budget item or you need to get ready for the posting of the public hearings. But I think we could probably get by with two or maybe the thirteenth if we end up meeting it. But I think two meetings, we'd probably be able to wrap things up. Sixteenth, twentieth? Thirteen thousand needed?
Yep.
Consideration of old business?
I have none at this time.
Administrative update?
Nothing beyond the, I think I updated the various projects. But we're hoping to get the Appleson Prom dam project out to bid at the end of this week, so that'll be. I was moving forward, had a call with council and engineers about easements, so we are going forward as planned.
Any non-public sessions?
I do not have any.
I just have a question about the allocation. Has that money, the fifty-two thousand from DOT, has that already been?
Has not, has not been spent, has not been committed. And they recommend and request that we don't, offset by, you know, reducing something else. So they'd like that to be additional work, so it'd be something we, maybe take a project from a future year and CIP or something and move it up.
So the reason I was asking was because of their line that it's, that it has been, that it is available.
We have received it.
We have received. But we shouldn't, we shouldn't allocate it yet.
I think we should as part of when we go out to bid for roadwork next year.
Does that help any of CIPC road rehab?
Does in the big picture, yes. And I think we have another, I don't know if the amount is similar, which is why I don't want to quote it, but we have a separate amount for bridges, which is why I mentioned when Steve was here, so certainly helpful.
More bite of the apple, anybody? Public input while we're still here, while we came back.
Is it cold out there? You're what?
Gifts.
Oh, nice.
So this, I'm a member of the New Hampshire Railroad Coalition and they did a calendar. Very nice. It's one twenty-four.
Thank you.
So they're all across the state, so enjoy it.
Thank you.
Fair thing.
Do you already get one?
No.
You want one?
Sure.
I get a camel's shoe dress? Second. All in favor? Aye. We're done. Thank you.
Thank you.